I'd like to welcome everyone to another partial virtual and partial in-person meeting. Board members and some town staff should be visible on your video. I'd also like to remind board members of two things. Please mute your microphone while you are not speaking, and please do not use the WebEx chat function. This virtual meeting will have public comment for the public hearing portion only as this is a special meeting. If necessary, staff is available and prepared to confirm or attempt to resolve any technical issues. If you are having technical problems and are unable to meaningfully participate in this meeting, please email Robert Bishop. His email address is on the top of tonight's agenda. We appreciate your patience with this virtual and in-person format. As with all our meetings, we hope to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue. I call to order this special meeting of the Monument Board of Trustees, November 9th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Hogan, will you take role, please?
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee LaKind?
Here.
Trustee Romanella?
Here.
Trustee Stevens?
Here.
Trustee Unruh?
Here.
Okay, first item on the agenda, ordinance number 26-2020. An ordinance approving final plat for Willow Springs Ranch, filing one. Ms. Flynn?
Good evening, Mayor and trustees, just waiting for Robert to put it up. Next slide. This is ordinance 26-2020, final plat for Willow Springs Ranch, filing number one. Next slide. It's located on Baptist off of Forest Lake Drive. Next slide. It is 109.52 acres, was originally 109.477 acres. 20 feet was added to tract KK to ensure adequate space for the lift station. Willow Springs Ranch final PD site plan was approved on July 6th, 2020. It's 372 lots, 38 tracts, and 16 streets. The growth density for this project is 1.83 dwelling units per acre. The tracts will be owned and maintained by Willow Springs Ranch Metro District. The plat is consistent with the approved final PD site plan, and all applicable code standards were met. Next slide. And this is the plat for Willow Springs Ranch, filing number one. Next slide. The Planning Commission hearing on October 14th, 2020, two members of the public had concerns to the applicant. Mr. Shelders was concerned about the number of people moving to Monument will destroy the lakes and will use more water. Mrs. Watts would like the town of Monument to ensure that the water districts and water demand information is available to the public. The Planning Commission voted four to one to recommend approval. The Planning Commission recommends approval of ordinance 26-2020, final plat for Willow Springs Ranch, filing number one, based on the findings that the proposed development criteria complies with all standards and criteria for approval with the following condition. The developer considers design elements for fencing and parking accommodations to increase the street appeal for this development. Tim McConnell is representing Willow Springs Ranch LLC, and this will be his part of his presentation. Next slide.
Good evening. Tim McConnell with Drexel Braille and Company. We prepared the plat for this subdivision, Willow Springs Ranch, filing number one. Thank you for your time tonight, but I do want to bring up and try to address a few items to hopefully alleviate some of the comments from Planning Commission. I feel I would be remiss if I did not. They brought up a few issues that they thought were not addressed when we came into Planning Commission. Some issues that were raised at the PD site plan. I wasn't presenting the PD site plan at that point in time. That was the planner, so I wasn't aware of all of those issues, but I want to at least bring these issues to the forefront. Let you guys see a few of the things that we were trying to address here then in regards to the parking, fencing, some of the street appeal that they wanted to see addressed. So with that, this first slide. Bringing in a few excerpts from the design guidelines for the subdivision. We have 25 pages of guidelines that cover a variety of things from landscaping to fencing and parking and everything else, but a few items that might help address the Planning Commission comments relating to fencing. Robert, is there a way to slide that over? You can't see the entire image. Oh, you got it here. This will help, sorry. There were some issues brought up with fencing. Most of these comments were pertaining to the 35... Sorry, they're actually 37 and a half for larger wide lots. The small lots up in what would be the northwest portion of the site. There were concerns about that regarding parking and making it look a little better up there, fencing. So this description comes out of the guidelines for the development describing the fencing. We are not planning on six-foot feeder privacy fencing. In this case, all the rear yards and side yards would have a five-foot tall maximum fence. They're kind of a slat board. This kind of describes it, six-inch board with nine-inch spacing in between. They're horizontal boards, and it also allows for people to put wire fencing up over that so it keeps more of an open field, but folks can have dogs and other stuff if they would like to keep those contained. So trying to minimize the fencing, and this describes what the fencing is going to have to consist of, colors and other things, and it does not run all the way around the yard. If you go into the lot line fencing description, I think it talks about that a little further. They can't run all the way up the side lot lines. They can only come a few feet up from the rear portion of the lot, so it's going to be fairly open field. So we wanted to address that item that's in the design guidelines for the development. If anybody has any questions on the fencing, I'll be glad to answer that. I'll roll through a few of these other items that Planning Commission had questions on. Parking was one issue. All of these houses, especially the smaller lots, will be a minimum two-car garage. They have at least an 18-to-20-foot driveway. That's what the setback is for parking within the driveway. No on-street parking is going to be allowed within the development to try to keep the street clean and make that curb appeal better for the development as well. Yep, sorry. We'll let you roll. You can go to the next one, Robert. There were some questions about the product type. This is for, let's say, the smaller lots because these were the issue very of concern. These are a couple of the models, very similar to this, that would be constructed there. You can see two-car garage and the couple different building elevations. Will be using earth tone colors for the most part. The one on the right probably more properly reflects that, but you can see a couple of different styles of architecture for these proposed lots. And I threw in a few other of the design guideline excerpts in relation to trying to keep curb appeal up. Yep, sorry, Robert. Vehicle storage, just no vehicle stored in the driveway or the yard. Anything that would have to be stored in the garage if that was the case. Accessory buildings, gives a lot of guidelines for that, and items to consider and criteria, views from adjacent, your neighbors, drainage, sizing. So all these guidelines are intended to restrict and keep the development clean and looking good going forward as it is developed. And that's the bulk of my presentation. Did we get the slide in? Sorry, I would want to get the slide in for the footprint. Since the smaller lots were a bigger concern, this is kind of a typical footprint for these lots. It's just three of them, side by side by side. The lots are quite deep. Most of them are 115 to 120 feet deep. That reflects this. The rear yards will be fairly large on these lots for this type of product. Forty feet plus with the patio on most of them, and you can see the side lot setbacks, six to six and a half feet. I think five foot is the minimum. You can get an idea of what these lots will look like on the... Or houses will look like on the lots. Also added some data there for the model types. Look at a two-story, no basement. That kind of gives you the square footage size, typically two to three-bedroom. Gives you kind of an average square foot for these units. And another criteria or guideline that's going to be added into the design criteria. They're going to stagger the front setbacks so the houses aren't all in a row facing the street. So it gives them some staggered setback, three to five feet between the units as they go down the street so it won't be one continuous line at the same setback, which will also extend the driveways further on a lot of these units and make them deeper. And that is kind of it for me. I'm really here just to answer questions if you have any regarding the development. I'll try to answer anything I can.
Okay, before we get to our questions, this is a public hearing item. So I will open it up to public comment. Mr. Bishop, do we have anyone currently wanting to make public comment?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Tharnish, do we have anybody in the hall wanting to make comment? No? Okay, thank you. Questions from the... I will leave the public hearing portion open momentarily, and we will start board questions and discussions. Questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions. To ensure that the residents adhere to the guidelines as far as no parking on the street, no RVs, all that, are there going to be covenants that they're going to be required to follow? Or is there an HOA where somebody's going to be overseeing that HOA, making sure that people in the area are following the rules?
There will not be an HOA, but there will be covenants, and they will be guided by the Metropolitan District and enforced by the Metropolitan District that covers the entire property.
Okay, so the Metropolitan District will be surveilling the area?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
And people will be able to file complaints with that. Is that how... I know we have a code enforcement division in our department, or whatever you call it, in our area. So would issues go to that, to them, or to the Metro District?
I think they'll probably start with the Metro District, but they can always fall back to city staff for code enforcement if they do not follow the development plan or PD site plan and other criteria as approved by the town.
Okay, so in lieu of the HOA, that is their fallback position or situation. And people, if they have some issues, mostly they go to the HOA. You know, an organization, I mean, a community would go to their HOA, but if they don't have an active HOA, then the next option would be the development.
The Metropolitan District takes the place of the HOA in this case?
Okay, very good, thank you.
In that case, does the... Do these HOAs or these Metro District standards align with ours? Can we enforce something that might not be one of our community standards or community regulations?
It would have to be in our code of ordinances.
Okay.
Most of the standards, these design guidelines, will probably be above and beyond the town's design standards.
Right, and my concern is the above.
Exactly. If it's above our standards and it doesn't meet our... We don't have a way in our code of ordinances to enforce it. We won't be able to enforce it.
Okay.
So that falls back to the Metro District?
Correct.
I live in an HOA, it's similar rules, and we actually have a president and secretary in the neighborhood that get emails or letters complaining if somebody's got an RV on the street for 10 days or something.
Correct.
You know, so it's a little bit different, but I hear what you're saying about the infrastructure. But that is a little bit higher standard, but it will fall back on the Metro District.
Correct.
Do you have, and I don't by any means expect you to see into the future, but do you have any idea or estimation of how many homes are going to be built next year? Or what your goal is?
This coming year, we anticipate we get the infrastructure complete by spring, summer, depending on how quickly the builders run through the lots. It could be upwards of two, we're anticipating around 230 lots within the first year, two-year and a half that will be developed.
Is that lots or buildings?
Sorry, buildings, one in the same. Single-family homes on the lots, yes.
Okay.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, I noticed that one of the questions from the Planning Commission was a lady who was concerned about water consumption and things like that. Who is taking care of the water? Is that in the Monument, or will Willow Creek be handling their own water?
Town of Monument is supplying the water.
Chief, will you switch with Mr. Tharnish real quick?
We will be installing the infrastructure to serve the development, but the water supply itself is coming from the town. Tom can speak to that.
Trustee Stevens, can you re-ask the question so that Tom may elaborate on it?
Well, I was just asking where the water supply, whether Willow Springs, as a Metro District, was providing their water or whether the water would be provided through us. And it sounds like what everybody's been saying is the water's coming from us. And given the fact we're just now in the process of building, or soon we'll be building a 2 million gallon water tank, and then we still have our 1 million if it still is functional, but I think there's not going to be any issue as far as water's concerned that I'm aware of.
There will not be. During this annexation process earlier, I signed off on a wheel-served letter for the first 300 homes. In the remaining 96 homes, we'll probably do this spring coming up because we'll have one additional well, and our tank project will be in progress. So we'll be in a good position for quite a while for the future. No concerns from the water.
Okay. I'll throw it. I believe as part of the annexation agreement, the development turned the groundwater rights over to the town. There's also a well site on the south end of the property in one of the adjacent two or in one of the park sites for future town use as well.
Okay. Do we have any questions from our online board members?
I have a question or two. We went over the fencing pretty quickly. Can we go back to that real quick, just so I have an understanding of the fence requirements or lack thereof? I wasn't quite getting it.
Can you go one more?
Is this going to be a split-rail fence that's permissible? But does... How far up from the back of the house to the front of the house can it go?
It's not really a split-rail. It's kind of a horizontal slat fence that can be five feet tall at the most. They say six-inch boards with nine-inch spacing in between them vertically. It's more criteria in here regarding the post types and color and all that. And then the fencing itself can only come up six feet along the side lot line from the rear of the house. And on the corner lots, it can extend out about five... Two within five feet of the sidewalk. So the fencing will not run, say, all the way up the side lot line. It can only run along the six rear feet of the side of the house.
So would it be safe to say this fencing would be like a five-foot section of privacy fencing turned on-side?
Basically, except it will have, you know, six-inch board, and then there'll be a nine-inch gap. Six-inch board, nine-inch gap between. So it's more open than it is closed.
Okay.
Put it that way.
So homeowners who have pets would be encouraged to put in the meshing to...
Correct. And that is allowed based on the color of the material?
I have to ask the Planning Department, is the style of this fencing modern in its look? I'm trying to picture it. Is that's within our guidelines? Because it sounds... It just sounds weird. I'm sorry, I can't think of a better term, but the six-inch board with nine-inch spacing seems to not sound so modern compared to what I've seen in the newer developments.
We don't have exact fencing guidelines for design criteria, just the width and the length that's allowed. But since they have a Metro District, they could have their own fence criteria as well. It just can't exceed our guidelines for five-foot, six-foot residential fencing that's allowed at max. And they have their own Metro Districts with their own guidelines for this type of fence design. And I could get a copy of the design of the fence to send to you as well if you would like.
Do we have any pictures in the packet? I mean, I saw the two of the home.
Yeah, I don't believe they had the fence in those pictures, but we can probably get a fence design to send to you.
I would like to see it. I don't know if any of the other board members would, but I just find this design strategy rather strange.
It's just more of an open field, similar to what's at Jackson Creek Homes in that area for leather traps, how they have the... They have the lower fencing, but you could see through it. So this one's going to be higher fencing that you could see through.
Okay, yeah, I'd just like to see a picture of it if I could.
Trustee Clark, any questions?
No.
Trustee Unruh?
No, not at the moment.
Okay.
If I remember right, when Dan Brown was here and you guys were doing the initial presentation that we approved, there are three parts or phases of this. There's the single-family on a smaller lot, then there's the more elbow room, you know, half-acre, three-quarter acre. And then is there going to be like townhomes that share a wall? Isn't there three different types of communities that are eventually going to fill this out? Do I remember that right?
There will not be any townhomes, but there were three types of development. There's the smaller lot that we looked at here earlier, and then there's your standard single-family that varies from 50 to 60-plus width lots. And then there are a few estate lots that are like five-plus acres on the property.
So what's next after this? After this initial smaller lots, then what are you going to do, the larger than the estate? I mean, is that how the development's going to progress or...?
They are all combined in this plat.
Oh, okay.
There will likely be one more plat in the development, what we're calling kind of our face-eight area in the far southwest that will come at a later date.
Well, the only reason I asked was it looked like the sample lots that you gave were just the narrower, smaller lots.
They are, because that was the concern that Planning Commission had, was only on those lots. So we wanted to try to address that. The rest of them are fairly standard, so.
All right. I remember it being like... In my mind, I remember it being like three separate type developments. Maybe not, okay.
And all three of those types are covered, encompassed in this first plat.
Mr. Bishop, can you go back to the lot diagram briefly? Yep. Trustee Romanella, if you'll notice, if you compare that to what's in your packet, you'll see the lot size differences on this tract. Because I'm seeing a lot of 8,000... 7,500-plus size where these are the 4,500 square feet size. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, if there... Do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
At this point, I'll close the public hearing portion, and we will bring it back to the board for a motion or recommendation. This needs to be recommended with... We had some... Where was it? We had one criteria. So a motion to approve needs to be approved with that one criteria, correct? So I'll bring it to the board for a motion or a recommendation.
Do we know what the criteria is? Do we need to state?
It's listed on... I don't believe we need to state it, just that with the following condition, or with one condition. Or do we need to state that? Robert, can you go back?
If you agree to the condition, you could make a motion to agree with the condition or without the condition.
Okay.
Let's clarify what that condition is.
The condition is outlined in the presentation, so let's clear. The condition is right here. The developer considers design elements for fencing and parking accommodations to increase the street appeal for the development.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 26-2020, an ordinance approving a final plat for Willow Springs Ranch, filing one, with the condition.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Ms. Hogan, will you take role, please?
Trustee Unruh?
Yes.
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
No.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-1. Next item on the agenda, discussion item, 2021 budget. Mr. Foreman?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. I think Rose is going to join us here in a second, but I give you the latest update of supplemental request. After a meeting with individual directors, they've prioritized their needs for 2021 to be included in this list. As you recall, we have $650,000 in reserves. If you approve a 60-40 split, like we talked about, that would allow $390,000 to fund supplemental requests. The list shows requests of $390,500. Tonight, we're looking for you to approve these supplemental requests so that we could add them into the draft budget and bring the budget back to you next week. So do you want me to go over this list with you, or would you just like to ask me questions?
I think the board is... Probably has questions. I don't think you need to go through all of it.
Okay.
So being a discussion item, we'll open it up for discussion. Trustee Romanella?
Yes. Going back to our last meeting, I had written some notes on the wish list. And in looking at what you presented, I have a couple of questions on things that seem to be a big priority that I don't see on the new list. One is the compensation analysis and strategy. I had written down and read a requirement, like this was really, really critical, and I don't see that.
Yeah, we talked about that this morning with Robert, and that's not a requirement for 2021 yet. We're probably looking for it for 2022, but we are going to do an internal compensation study in partnership with CML.
Okay. My next one was, that I had marked as very important, was the retrieval for cell phones for Cora questions. I know that that would be very laborious for staff, and it seemed like it was worth the money. So is that on hold as far as you guys are concerned as well?
I don't know which one that was.
So that, um, it makes it easier during core requests?
Oh, yeah.
This was the Smarsh request.
Yeah, the Smarsh request, how much was that one?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, yeah, we, we put that off till next year so far.
Uh, I, I, I remember...
Off the ability to get the text message, which is just made it kind of more efficient for staff, we're looking at kind of being fiscally responsible, where we could move money around, we're still capable of getting those text messages actively.
If they haven't been deleted.
Well, the, the policy is we don't delete them.
I understand.
Until the time runs out on.
Alright, um, my, my next one was, um, that I had priority written down, was the permitting software for twenty-five thousand dollars.
We already paid for that in the twenty twenty budget.
We did, okay, alright, um, great, and then, alright, that, and then, so then when it comes to the police, the number that I was trying to come up with is very similar, uh, like within probably five thousand dollars of what you have, but I'm just kinda, um, curious about the items. So, it looked like on the extended coverage of a police person says eighty, on the old one, it looked like three sixty for four at what was called full coverage, which would make it, if I'm doing math right, ninety thousand each, so there's a little bit of a difference there. And then, um, it looks as, I know the insurance was absolutely critical, um, we've got patrol vehicle three I see, the sergeant levels and that, but I thought that the tasers were state mandated, or that we needed to keep that equipment up, and I was wondering about that.
Yeah, so, uh, trustee Romanello, what we did on the salary, to answer that question first, is we kinda hired between year one, two, and three on laterals, so we went with the lower number with the anticipation that if we did hire a level three lateral, we would just hold that position a little longer, um, to make it more realistic in the, uh, budget request. As far as the tasers, um, the, the theory is, is when we prioritized, uh, from the last meeting, we went back and looked at it again, and I met with the manager, and we, we were kind of in the agreement that we think the tasers will get us through another year, uh, you're in a different spot now with your reserves, so if we do have to go back as a contingency, there'll be a contingency next year as opposed to this year when there was a limited contingency.
Then what about the storage and replacement for body cameras based on Senate bill? I'm really just trying to keep you and us out of trouble, so I, I thought that these are really important, and now I'm just wondering, so what about that nine thousand dollars?
So a lot of the, a lot of the retention on the, uh, the data, we came up with two plans, one to put the camera on while the officer was responding to the call, the others now will be a, a plan B where we don't put the camera until they actually get to the call, so that will lower the, the, uh, the size of the retention. Um, and, and I think we're gonna be good, because really the, the meat and potatoes on that Senate bill won't kick in until after the majority of this budget year.
Okay?
Yeah.
So you will be compliant with that by, by using, utilizing the cameras in that fashion?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, um, I mean, I think there was one other, no, we covered the tasers. Okay, no, that, that, those are my questions, thank you.
Mr. Farnish, um, on this new supplemental budget, you have the security gates for the public works site, the portable offices and the mower. I had, and just to shed some light on it, I had, uh, those as lower level concerns because we are hoping to have a new public works facility in the future. Can you, uh, give us some feedback on your reasoning behind moving those up to priorities?
Yes, um, the portable offices is because I don't really have a good feeling for a timeline when our public works facility could get built. The, uh, current facilities deteriorate, uh, quite a bit each passing year, and we're at the point now where we're, we're pouring, you know, anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand out of our budget, just, just to maintain those, those three wooden sheds that we have. And, uh, I thought if we're gonna make a move to at least get us into a position where we can last a few more years if needed because of the funding for the new facility, that would be the most appropriate way, uh, to do that. And there's also some value in if you pursue a, a portable type office building that when we do get the new facility built, that's an asset that we could definitely, uh, sell and recoup some of that money. The, uh, the second part, the remote operated gates, is because when I got together with the staff again to look over the priorities, uh, since we're limited on, on that dollar amount, um, we're hoping to, to some of the smaller items that are in there, I could've done a lot of smaller items and moved them up, but I think we're gonna try to work those in through the year depending on how our budget's going, how our, uh, expenditures are going. The remote operated gates, one allows the guys for the gates to close behind them and lock when they leave, cause there are times when everybody is, is out in the field, and our shop is, is, is not, there's no staff there. So, we occasionally have guys that forget to lock doors and forget to close things behind them, and this would ensure that when they leave, they, they hit a remote on their way out and everything closes behind them. And there's a key, there'll be a keypad entry on those to, to access if they, uh, didn't have the remote to open. Um, so that's more of a security issue, given that, um, we're a pretty open facility during the day. It's just a concern we have, we've, we've been fortunate that we have, haven't seen a lot of, um, um, things stolen from our vehicles and things that are left in the shop, but we're, we're always, um, trying to keep somebody there through the day, and a lot of times we are, just through our normal operations. But, like I said, there are times that I've gone down and had to check on things and there's, there's nobody in the shop, and it would've been nice to know that the gates were at least closed and it would've took something else to get in there. The, uh, mower, that's just a difficult choice we had to make, I couldn't afford both of them, so we chose we can get one now, and we'll just, we'll push that next mower to, to next year's budget.
Okay, um, I've been to these wooden offices, or these shed style offices, and I don't argue that they need to be replaced at all, I was just more or less trying to understand the priority, uh, with future plans.
There was a strong push from some of my, my supervisors to, um, you know, port more money towards a, a skate park design or towards replacing the, the carpet in this building, but I, I kinda looked at it, i- is this something that can wait, uh, for another year, can we, uh, maintain it in such a fashion that it doesn't become a critical issue? It's just things that we know we have to do, uh, and because of the limited resources we have, we just had to make some, some difficult decisions.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the board?
I have a question for the chief. Um, in regards to adding the police officer position for eighty K and increasing the overtime budget for fifteen K, is that going to help you be able to allow officers to go to their extra training or certifications or whatever is required that, um, from a regulation standpoint or just from a standard training standpoint?
Uh, yes, ma'am, that's gonna, uh, so the, the added police officer will, will for sure make us at least two officers per shift for now, uh, one, one of which will be a supervisor. Part of the fifteen thousand overtime will, will supplement, uh, the coverage if we don't have a supervisor or ones on vacation. The remainder, uh, and you gotta, you gotta remember, this is just an addition to the current overtime budget, so the remainder of that fifteen will be used to get the ops, the sergeants to leadership and special supervisor training, which we hope to reduce liability. And, um, more, more of the, I know we've explained it to you before, more of the non-post mandatory stuff, but more of the stuff that takes us to the next level with, you know, achieving excellence.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So I know that, um, we, um, we voted a while back for referendum to put on the ballot to get you some more money, uh, that referendum fa- uh, that referendum failed, and at the time, it was primarily because of issues like, we are a growing town, we have unfunded mandates, and we have, and we have, we're understaffed, and I think with, um, trustee Elliott, she just brought up the, the fact that, uh, it looks like this is enough to get you staff. Are you comfortable? I mean, of course, you never, uh, what you, this is not what you originally would like to have had, but are you comfortable this will get you through the next year for what you need to do?
Uh, ye- yes, sir, trustee Stevens, so if you, if you go back to those three buckets that I've explained in the past, the, the mandatory, they're really important, and the nice to have. I think right now, we're, we're somewhere between the mandatory and the really important. Um, I think, uh, we're not gonna achieve many standards associated with, uh, the International Chief of Police Association standards or CIA standards, uh, due to a lack of compliance. Um, we'll focus on the very high liability topics like pursuits, use of force, uh, things of that nature. Um, you know, I, I felt when we, when we first got, when I first got here, you know, we were like my jets in oh and seven score, oh and eight now, I think, um, probably up to tonight, uh, but I think right now with this, it moves us, it moves us more to like a, you know, a, um...
The Cowboys, two and eight.
Yeah, there you go. I mean, I thi- I think this puts us in the, in the, you know, with three wins, if you will, and, um, and I make light of it, but, you know, and, and again, you know, we thank all the, the taxpayers that, that did come out to support us, I think we, we only lost it by about three hundred and sixty votes, um, because they truly got to hear from us on how important it was. But I think we've increased staffing from sometimes one officer patrolling the entire town, to now we're at a position where we have at least, um, uh, two officers, one of which will be a supervisor, um, we can get them to some of that training. We're replacing the cars, I know we've, we've kicked the cars down the road, um, a couple of years now, so we'll put four new police cars out there. So I, I don't think, I don't think we're certainly close to exceeding any industry standards, but I think we're, this is a good fix for now, and I think this will certainly get us to, to next year's budget, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, questions from our online board members? Okay, Mr. Foreman, um, I understand you have on here assistant to the town manager position, and I understand with the number of projects we have coming up, that that's very important, uh, especially for you and Tom, but what I don't see is, on the new plan, with the projects we have coming up, I see that both strategic plan and transportation plan have been taken off. Would you explain your thought behind that?
Yes, when we looked at priorities, uh, the strategic plan and the transportation plan are two things that we would love to be able to do in twenty twenty-one, but we just don't have the proper funding to be able to do those right now. Uh, we think that the transportation plan and the strategic plan both will be, uh, will be prepared to be able to do those in twenty twenty-two. We're hoping, like I told, said before, we think that the revenue's gonna continue coming in strongly, uh, and that we'll watch in twenty twenty-one to see if there's extra funding, and if we see that there's extra funding in twenty twenty-one, we'll be coming back to the board to, uh, ask you to fund some of the things that are on the supplemental list that we can't fund right now.
Okay, but you don't feel that not having these is gonna affect our current list of projects?
No, sir, no, sir, we can, we can do those without these two plans.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Um, I would like to just make a, uh, a statement with regard to the police and the budget and, uh, double E that didn't pass.
Two E.
Well, yeah, okay, two E. Double E, two E, there you go, alright, um, the, okay. Uh, one is, that needs to be re-brought up again, okay? We, we, we need to push for that, that needs to happen, there's no doubt about that. Um, I, I think that when we do do that, we need to talk about, uh, creating, uh, some type of a, uh, fundraising campaign to do some marketing for it, and we also need to have it worded properly. I've gotten calls from several citizens going, I de- I don't even understand what this means. And I understand that there needs to be the legalese that has to be handled appropriately, but I think there's also, we need to look at some, uh, clarity and simplicity, uh, to make sure that people know what they're voting for. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Appreciate it.
And I was just clarifying, we did have an EE and we had a two E.
Okay.
I di- I didn't, I didn't wanna cause any further confusion, having a bunch of people say they voted yes on EE and don't know what two E is. Okay, so this is just a discussion item, um, so, Mr. Foreman, you're just looking for direction to move forward with the current supplemental request list?
Yes, sir, we're looking for direction so that we can put this in the draft budget and bring that back to you next week.
Okay, so we will not take a formal vote, but I will ask for, um, agreements. Uh, trustee Unruh, are you in agreements?
Yeah, so, I mean, just for clarification, then, if this is passed, it's, I mean, essentially covering all but five hundred of what the ask is?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, um, I agree with that.
Trustee Clark?
No.
Okay, do you have anything you want to clarify on that?
No.
Okay, trustee LeKind?
I agree.
Trustee Stevens?
Yeah, I think the town staff worked hard to come up with, uh, you know, what they could get by with, and I appreciate all your hard work and the effort, and I know it was painful to have to give things up that were important, uh, but, uh, I appreciate your efforts, and I think this, I, I'm in agreement with it.
Okay, trustee Romanello?
Uh, I echo trustee Stevens, there's just not, the, the pie's just not big enough for everybody, but I do support, uh, the town manager's new supplemental request list.
And Mayor Protim Elliott?
I support it as well, you all see these are the, what the priorities are based on the amount of money you have to work with, I'm in agreement.
Okay. I am also in agreement, but I do want to give compliment to the chief. You probably could've gotten support from this board for more items that you may need, but I think you really took the time to allow other departments to meet their needs also, and I appreciate you looking out for your fellow, your coworkers and the community as a whole, because when we focus on one department, other part, other departments tend to fall short and no, don't have the funding they need, so really appreciate you, uh, picking out and being very specific on what you need, thank you. That takes us to item five. Trustee Stevens, you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move to go into executive session pursuant, uh, uh, to section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B to receive legal advice from the town attorney, and also, uh, that we adjourn the me- the board meeting at the conclusion of the executive session.
Okay, I have a mo- I have a motion and a second. Ms. Hogan, do you want to take role?
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee LeKind?
Yes.
Trustee Unruh?
Yes.
Trustee Romanello?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. That motion passes seven zero, and we will take a five minute adjournment, or recess, excuse me.